We're good?
Yeah, you're good. Sorry.
April 5th, 2019, to order at 7:38. Okay, I'll rise for the President's Legion, please.
The flag to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so I guess we're supposed to do a... Oh, that's right, okay. So approval of agenda. Anybody have anything to add or change?
No.
Okay, so a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
So moved.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye. So moved, okay. Roll call.
DeLucky.
There, President.
And Clark.
Here.
Patterson here, and Grant.
Here.
Okay, so now we have approval of the minutes and... So it would just be three voting on it with one abstention.
I jumped it down there from one.
Yeah, that's okay. Well, you can vote on everything but the minutes.
This is what we're...
Yep.
...for.
There's our minutes.
So motion to approve the minutes of March 4th, 2019, as presented.
Support.
On favor?
Aye.
Abstain?
Abstain.
Okay, so moved. Okay, so now we get to welcome our new member. So, welcome. So you'd kind of give us your name and kind of maybe a little why you joined planning and... And we'll move on from there.
I'll keep it short.
Okay.
My name is Kevin Grant. I've been a resident for several years now in the village. Just to reveal that wasn't something. Just wanted to get involved in the community. I saw this as one of the areas where the village needs some assistance, and I had some prior experience before moving here with various commissions, and just wanted to help out.
Cool. Have you served on a planning commission?
On a planning commission, no. I was approached previously in another municipality, but I didn't serve.
So what did you do for the other municipalities?
Public safety and civil service.
Oh, okay, well, cool. Glad to have you aboard.
Thank you.
Yeah. Okay, so zoning ordinance. So we kind of let it slide because we didn't have enough members, but now we have a new recruit. We're gonna...I'd like to delve back into it, but... So Kevin, you've got a book. And if you would...we'll give you a little bit of time, so we won't go right into this, but maybe within the next month, you could have go through the book. I'll have Becky give you the highlights of what we've already done and as far as what we've done, as far as the changes go. So, and then we're gonna move on from where we were, from where we left off. What we're doing is redoing our zoning ordinance, okay? So, and if you need more time, then just kind of let us know and we'll work with that.
Because I've already gone through it online.
Okay.
And I had some questions for it previously, so... Did I get a copy of the latest revisions?
Yep.
And have those been finalized yet?
Nothing has been finalized, because we're gonna go through the whole thing and then give it to the planner, and then we have to review it from the planner to the planner's input of what we'd like to change and what we can change.
Okay.
So...
Was there one, I think it's been a while, is there one main area that we're really looking at or is it overall everything?
Am I supposed to remember this?
Well, I've lived through about at least two of these.
Yeah. I don't know. It was some science thing, but we did the science thing, so I mean... But it seems like every time we do the science ordinance, something else pops up. So there's fences was one of the things. There's a couple of other things that... The definitions, we wanted to move from one spot to another, and the rest was really just kind of making it flow a little better, and they wanted to see if we couldn't condense them, to make it smaller.
Cleaning up a couple of things too, where one section says one thing and the other side says another.
Yes, exactly.
So that's kind of one of the main things.
Yeah.
That you're cleaning it up.
You think you've got it all covered, and then you go and look and backtrack it. It's like, yep.
Well, so that's one of the things, Kevin, where I said that the... We give our proposal to the planner, and then planner tells us, "Well, you can do this or you can't do this." But then we have to check that the planner did what we wanted to do, because we did a master plan almost two decades ago, and we probably went nine months with the planner back and forth. We would tell them what we wanted, and they would write it up, and it would be different. And it wasn't that we couldn't do what we wanted to do, they just wouldn't write down what we wanted. And then the next month, they come in, and they give us what we wanted on this section, but changed this section. It was a...
And you really had to look at it close.
Yes, yes. So just because you think you got it done.
Is it what you want?
Yeah. You don't always have it done, so...
You had a couple...
One example, we... There's something called Michigan Enabling Planning and Enabling Act. And we passed that, and in doing so, there was some stuff that we did that changed the zoning ordinance. And one of the things we did was the... It's called the C1 area, so it's the downtown businesses. And there's no parking requirements. The buildings are as-is, been there for 100 years, give or take. And so new business come in, they have to come to the planning. Sometimes they don't even change the operation, they just change the name of the business. So for instance, Papa's was Akats before. And I don't know how many times the hair salon has changed hands, at least three or four times. So what we did was we said we made it so that the chairperson could approve things like that, as long as nothing had changed.
Right, right.
Well, it was just mainly the building was gonna be doing the same type of business. Just a new owner, so really nothing drastically had changed, especially when we had no restrictions on parking for that district. There really isn't anything to...
There's really nothing to look at, yeah. So as long as... And so they still had to fill in an application and go through the planning process, but in order to make it expedient and less painful for the applicant. But it came down that they wrote it not as the planning commission chair could approve that, they wrote it as a building inspector could approve that, who has no business approving a planning commission approval.
Okay.
So that's why you gotta look at stuff, and I mean, we... You look at it and you think you, you know, you're kind of... I guess what we've done is, you know, you glance over it and say, "Okay, this is what we did." But you have to actually word, read every word, because that was...everything was in there, but instead of chairperson, it was building inspector.
And I thought labor contracts were bad.
Yeah. So, but our planner is much better now than what the planner we had at that time.
Still have the same company, correct?
No.
But now, person, who do we have now?
We sell that McKenna. So that was McKenna, wasn't it?
Okay.
Yeah.
So I thought, oh, yeah.
Yes, it was. But they...every couple of meetings, we'd have a new guy.
Yeah. So that's hard.
Way back, remember Rodney was there? Is it still...that's still McKenna?
I wasn't here with Rodney.
Yeah, because he's the one that messed up the whole DDA boundaries. He wanted to do it with split properties instead of following property lines. Because you want a straight line. I said, "I don't give a shit about the lines." But it's kind of the whole of the property. I said, "I can't divide taxes."
That's how many in the audience. I wasn't there.
Be quiet, you over there.
Of course, like you didn't want to go down the middle of the street.
Right.
You wanted to include the whole street.
How do you figure out taxes that you're putting millage on for DDA on 37 feet of this property and the rest of it at a regular tax rate? It was crazy. And they're the ones that brought in stuff that is finished and had Village of Metamora, where they just copied and paste. So, things have come a long way since then.
Yes. Well, and then the... The process is the applicant submits an application. So, and then the planning commission reviews that application, but also that application all time goes to the planner. So the planner will give comments on the applicant's proposal. So you have guidelines that you go by, and you have...and the planner... And now our planner gives us stuff, and this is what you have to do. This is your gray areas. This is what you have a little bit of leniency towards, plus or minus. So the Rodney guy that was just spoke of... There was an applicant that came in, and he made him change our coal drawing because it was too far away from the road, I think, was the thing. So, and they said, "Well, we really don't want to change it. We need to put it here." "No, you need to move this." So they spent $10,000, made all new drawings, came back in, and they said, "Well, you can't put it there. There's overhead power lines here." So they moved it back to where it originally was. So you have to kind of watch the planner too. So one of the things, you see, I have this. So this is...Becky asked me to give you this. So this is a planning commission bylaw. So it's kind of an idea or explanation of what everybody does and kind of what the...a little bit of what the planning commission does. And I went through this. So one of the things, when we have an applicant, it's prudent to go to the physical site and review the site before you come into the meeting. So read the applicant's proposal, look at the ordinance to look to see how it fits. There's kind of...there's many spots in the ordinance book that would pertain to the applicant. Could be...one would be zoning, another would be usage, another would be lot lines, et cetera. But you really kind of want to go and physically look at the site to find out what it looks like and if everything kind of drives, so...
And what's next door. Because sometimes you gotta take that into account too.
Yeah.
And an applicant love a drawing without referencing anything that's happening next door. You might even have some pictures of the property, but till you lay eyes on it, it's just better.
But you can't go on the property. So that's one of the things. So you can view the property, but you can't go on the property, so without permission of the owner.
Yeah, I mean, I remember going to a site and somebody saw me out there. I said, "What are you doing?" I said, "I'm on planning." And they said, "Oh, come on," you know, and I walked.
Just identify yourself.
Right.
Yeah. So the other thing, the conflict of interest. So our village is a small town, so it's...there's a little kind of a gray area on the concept of interest, because if you've been here for a long time, you know a lot of people. So you can't abstain from everything of every person that you know. So, but anytime you have something where you have a direct correlation with that person, then you have to either excuse yourself or you can voice it to the planning commission what your relationship is and what your concern is, and the planning commission would then make a decision on whether or not you should excuse yourself or not.
Understood.
So this is yours.
Thank you.
Good. Okay.
So for September, we're beginning again with 11? That's where we left off.
Um, no. I think what we'll do is we'll let...at our next meeting, we'll let Kevin say where he's at, and then, then, once he's kind of up to speed, then we'll go...we'll go into it. I don't really want to push too much.
Now, are you referring to in here or...
What's that? Yes, that's the zoning ordinance. So where we're at, I'm not quite sure. So what did you say?
Eleven.
Eleven?
Because I have reviewed this, like I said, online.
Okay.
From what was explained to me, this and the online version are identical.
Yes, they should be, yes.
So... Yeah. The only thing I would just need to review is, like I said, any changes that were in the pipeline. And then you said 11 is next, section 11.
Okay, so then, okay, if you've already looked at that, I applaud you for that, because there's been many people that have served on a planning commission for years and still not gone through the book.
What about a PDF version? It goes a lot faster.
What's that?
I've got a PDF version. I can read that when I'm on the road.
Not driving, I hope.
Excuse me?
Not driving, I hope.
Um, no.
Okay, good.
I'm not one of those people.
So, okay, so let's do 11 and 12.
11 and 12 for September?
Yeah, that's a...not too many, that's only...
Article, Article 11, Article 11.
Yeah, section.
Yeah.
Yeah, Article 11 and 12, yes, okay, yeah. So it's only 13 pages roughly. I know those should be fairly easy. But since the landscaping, screening, and buffering... I ride my bike as you do. So across the street from you, going, there's a couple of houses that have some pretty good encroachments onto the sidewalk. So somehow we should address those. We can't...so planning, planning has no teeth. So we talk to people, we approve the application. Once we approve the application, planning is really done with the process. The only thing we can do is we have contact with the building inspectors, the building inspector. When we approve something, we give it to the building inspector, what the approval is, what the conditions of the approval are, if any. And then the building inspector knows that he has to go and check with the applicant about sort of certificate of occupancy or anything that is done on that parcel. But we have no recourse to do anything if they don't follow their guideline. So the only thing we can do is talk to the building inspector and ask the building inspector to do something, in which we've done in the past.
Especially if it's something that...especially if we have a list of stuff that comes up that maybe their dumpster, they had to have fencing around it, they had to have some blockage or some shrubbery or something, and it's all listed in the motion. The applicant, you signed it, the applicant signed it, so it's like nothing new to him. He knows he wasn't supposed to do it. And then you kind of stick the building inspector on it, and after about six months goes by and things aren't happening the way they're supposed to.
Kind of like the driveway on Heath Street that never got paved?
Yeah.
Okay, so... Then, so chair report. So this is something that I found out today. So the... The fair wants to put a banner up, but the banner's already up, but as long as everything was the same, then...
You're talking about the banners entering into town?
Yeah.
And I think they put it up last week, but...
It's a big similar to it.
So, but if we would have a meeting last month, we would have got this, so it's okay. So it's one of the things where it's a reoccurring thing. So that Armita Jams and the Armita Fair put banners up. The fair goes across the roadway, so they have to have village approval to do that. The signs in the park, the banners in the park, that has to have village approval also. So since it's reoccurring, we approved it on a yearly basis. As long as nothing changed, they just had to say that they were... Nothing had changed, and they were continuing with last year.
They also are.
So we didn't have...we didn't vote on, we don't have to vote on it or anything. They're just...
Those were on their temporary signage, wasn't it?
Yep. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, so then... Rima, Armita Real Estate. So that's the... Nursing home, rehab, assisted living, village rehab and care community. They want to do a lot split. So I just got this today, so I'll go over it and kind of look at it and see.
What, that there'll be two separate entities or something?
I don't know what they're gonna do. They're from...again, I just got this like...today I didn't really look at it, but it looks like they want to split the vacant property.
Oh, okay.
So...
Because the previous owner is going to retain one of them.
What's that?
The previous owner wants to retain one of them, one of the lots, or one of the part splits.
You mean the original owner, Paul?
Oh, really?
Okay.
Oh, cool. Well, there's 26 acres there, so there's a lot of property. And I don't know how much they've used already, but it's quite deep. And there is a...again, I really didn't look at this very good, but... It looks to me that there's a wide enough access on the western boundary, right where the signs are.
Okay, yeah, okay. Along Jacobs.
The village signs.
Along Jacobs property there?
Correct, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. So that would be the ingress egress. So, but I'll kind of take a look at this, then I'll call the planner and make sure everything's okay, and then we'll schedule a meeting.
Okay.
Okay, anything else, any questions?
At this time, no.
Okay. So we're also the Downtown Development Authority Board. So planning has two functions. So I just found out that the DDA, it's a state guideline that we have to have two meetings, two annual meetings, and the meetings can't be the budgetary meetings. So pretty much alls we did before was approve the budget or approve expenditures, so, and elect officers. So... We're gonna do the DDA meeting today. So the roll call, it's the same, so we'll just say that...
Do we have to close out our planning meeting?
You have to close up the planning meeting first.
We do.
And enter the DDA.
Okay. I thought you could just go into the DDA.
I thought we'd cut them separate.
Okay, all right, so a motion to...
Close the regular planning commission of August 5th at 8:00.
I'll second that.
On favor?
Aye.
So moved, okay, so...
Do we need a pause tape or...
No, it's not as executive meeting. You're just into another entity of the planning commission. You have two halves.
Just making sure.
Yeah, you have two halves.
Do you need one file there or two when you go to post it, so?
Yeah, it'll be two.
Yeah. Okay. So the roll call is the same. New business to the DDA. The only thing that the new business is, is we paid a loan payment. So this was just interest?
What's the amount?
$5,931,20, but I sent it to...
It's interest only payment.
Bank of New York Milton Trust. So this was just an interest payment. So we have to approve this, correct?
You did at your budgetary meeting, you gave me.
So this is just a notice that you, this has been paid?
Yep.
Okay.
Question to the chair?
Sure.
This is interest on what exactly?
Well, so again, this is the DDA, Downtown Development Authority. So the Downtown Development Authority years ago did a Main Street project. So unlike most businesses, instead of having any kind of collateral or down money, they went ahead and borrowed money upfront, didn't have any, and now they did a project and we're...we have to pay for it.
They were bonded on that project.
Yeah, they bonded.
Okay.
And there was a certain district that... A couple of certain businesses and homes that were in the DDA district. We extracted taxes from them to go into the fund to pay for the fund. And then when the economy took a real hit, so had our tax base, so we kind of fell behind on what was being...
Generated.
Yeah, generated.
Because the DDA has a base tax amount that everything is levied off of. And when the economy went down, everybody's assessments were reduced. You can drop an assessment as much as you like, but when it comes time to raise the assessment, you can't go over 2.5 mils to increase the assessment. So in the blink of an eye, the assessment can drop, but it takes forever for it to build back up. So between that and then proposal A, when it allowed the personal property to exempt out of tax collection, that was a two-fold hit. So the DDA just was not collecting enough money to sustain itself. Had a bond that it couldn't pay for. No projects it could do because it had no money, and then you have enough to pay the bond. So at that point, we did some research and seeing how other communities were handling, because in the municipal review magazines, we were getting, you know, another town bites the dust for DDA, you know, they were dissolving their DDA's. Well, we can't dissolve ours because we had a bond. So what communities were doing in those instances, they incorporated it into their planning commission, because there's really no need for meetings, there's no need for extra DDA members, you had no money to spend. So all you're doing actually is babysitting that fund, that account, that...
The payment of that loan.
Right.
The payment of that loan.
So when you did your budget meeting, you affirmed that there would be no expenditures out of the DDA other than payments associated to the bond, because you have a paying agent fee that comes out, it's like $750, and you're two bond payments a year. So that's all, all the business it conducts. But you have to by state. If you have a DDA, it has to have these defined meetings. So that's what you're doing now, is going through the motions to...
We're just keeping it all legal for...
To abide by those restrictions.
No, that's fair enough. I was just curious because you were...
And we've got another nine years to pay.
Okay.
Yeah, we redid the downtown sidewalks, the streets, the curves, the sewers, the street lighting in a block and a half area, or two blocks, I guess. One whole block and a half block, half block or something. It wasn't cheap, so...
Okay.
And they didn't have any money in the county to settle it?
But the way things were, you know, we thought, "Okay, we'll generate this much this year, and we'll look good on paper until..."
Counted their chickens before they hatched.
I'm sorry?
Said they counted their chickens before they hatched.
It's never a good deal to finance 100% of a project.
Right.
Anyway, well, thank you.
Yeah, okay, so... Other comment? None? Adjournment for the DDA meeting?
Motion to adjourn the DDA meeting at 8:05.
I will second.
Okay, on favor?
Aye.
Aye, so moved. Okay, anything else coming up on the...any questions on the planning commission?
Yeah, if you're gonna do more planning commission, you have to re-enter the planning commission meeting.
Re-enter? Oh, we didn't really close it. We just went out and we didn't adjourn.
That was the motion, close the meeting, so...
So that was the adjournment?
So just, yeah. So I would, just to be safe, just reopen the planning commission meeting.
Motion to reopen the regular planning commission meeting of August 5th at 8:01 PM.
Okay, I'll second.
Okay. On favor, aye?
Aye.
Okay, so any questions?
Excuse me?
Christie?
What?
You adjourned the DDA at 8:06, I think, 8:08? And then you reopened the...
At 8:00, and I just...
Oh, 8:00, I'm sorry. My mistake, my bad.
It took a little five minutes, so... Reopening at 8:06.
Okay.
This family's one.
Yeah, yeah.
So any questions on kind of what we're doing with the zoning ordinance changes? Kind of what we're looking for is inconsistencies and something that doesn't make sense. And if there's any way that we can minimize wordage, I think that would be good. And if there's something that needs to be put in here, I think we should do that too. So kind of the landscaping, so one of the things that I mentioned earlier was about some sidewalk intrusions on Fulton Street. So there's supposed to be...isn't it five foot? The fence is supposed to be five foot back from... on Fulton Street. So there's supposed to be, I, I, isn't it five foot? The fence is supposed to be five foot back from the...
I don't think it's that much.
I don't think it's that much either.
But it's a right of way?
I had three in mind, too.
I thought it was three.
Okay, well, it could be. I thought it was a right of way and right of way is usually five foot. But, okay, but anyway, whatever that is, we need to, um, kind of make sure it's in there and then make sure when we do anything, um, and then we need to make sure when we do this, we give something in writing to the building inspector.
Of course, there'll be a lot of stuff that'll still be grandfathered in, because it's...
Is that on Fulton or on Main?
Fulton.
Yeah, there's just a couple of, a couple of spots.
Couple on Main, too.
Well, there, there's some on Main, but the reason I know is because I ride my bike back and forth. So it's kind of like when you gotta move out of the way or, you know, the way it hits you in the head or the knee, that's when you kind of notice the most.
Yeah.
Comes to your attention.
Yeah, exactly. Okay, so any, uh, any other business? If not, a motion to adjourn?
Pretty good. Motion to adjourn the planning commission meeting on August fifth, finally.
Yeah.
At eight oh eight.
I will second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye, so moved, okay, cool.